All right, does that mean Cory that we are ready to call the meeting to order?
We are still waiting for Mary.
Okay. All right, I think. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. It is seven oh three and I will call the meeting to order. Um, roll call, vote Cory.
Yes, prior to the roll call Rene Ortega, Town Attorney. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So prior to the role call, I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting. And it should be reflected in the minutes, but this town council meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section fifty-four nine five-three. Sub B in that Mayor Wernikoff is participating from the Hyatt Regency Boston Harbor Room eight twenty-two. One-on-one Harborside Drive, Boston, Massachusetts, zero-two-one-two-eight. Mayor Wernikoff is participating by Zoom webinar. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. Also, I note for the record that we have a quorum of council members present in the room. I would like, I would now like to request Mayor Wernikoff to respond to the following questions and confirm certain matters for the record. Number one, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Uh, two, were you able to hear the proceedings on this end until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate? In this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you?
No.
I would now like to ask that any member of this council speak up at this time if such council member, sorry, council member has not been able to clearly hear Mayor Wernikoff. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all council members present have indicated they were able to hear Mayor Wernikoff clearly. I would now like to advise the council that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now do we go to roll call?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Alps.
Here.
Councilmember Hupdi. Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Vice Mayor Haskell.
Here.
Mayor Wernikoff.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. Um, we are starting out tonight with a very special proclamation. Um, I am honored to have the opportunity to read the proclamation to Howard Young for exemplary service. And I can't really see here well on Zoom, but I am assuming Howard, you are somewhere there in the room.
He is.
Okay, great. Um, the town of Portella Valley honors Howard Young for exemplary service to the town of Portola Valley. Whereas Howard Young has served the town of Portola Valley with unwavering dedication and exceptional service for twenty-two years. And whereas Howard Young has been instrumental in leading the development and construction of Town Center. Showcasing his vision and commitment to the community. And whereas as the Director of Public of the Public Works Department. Howard Young has been a guiding force in transforming an eleven-acre old school site into a vibrant community hub. This site now serves as a place for residents to gather, celebrate, access resources and information. And provides a sustainable workplace for staff. And whereas Howard Young is strongly admired by residents and committee members alike for his dedication, leadership. And ability to forge strong connections within the community. And whereas Howard Young has exemplified the ethos of the town of Portola Valley. Through his tireless work embodying the principles of service, sustainability and community engagement. And now therefore the town of Portola Valley hereby recognizes and honors Howard Young. For his exemplary service and contributions to our town. His efforts have not only improved the physical infrastructure of our community. But have also created long-lasting relationships with all those who share their pride in our town. Be it further resolved that the town of Portola Valley extends its deepest gratitude to Howard Young. For his outstanding service and wishes him his continued success in all his future endeavors. Proclaimed on this day, June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four by the town of Portola Valley. Can we have a round of applause? Wonderful. Thank you, thank you so much. I can see everybody clapping, but it's odd. I can't, I can't hear you guys clapping, so. Uh, I would like to, um, you know, Howard, I just want to say I'm so sorry I'm not there tonight. Um, this, this, this just ended up being when I had it had a commitment with my, my, my son on the, on the East Coast here. Um, and I just want to thank you for your commitment and your hard work, your loyalty. Um, but above all, in many ways, your friendship to the town. And I've really enjoyed working with you over what is a shorter time to relative to many who are there with you in the room. Um, and so with that, I would, I would love to invite my colleagues to, uh, to share in some comments as well. Judith, if you could help me with the room because I can't really see from the camera here.
Mayor Wernikoff, Howard is at the podium, so I think we'll.
Oh, great.
Why don't we let Howard speak?
Okay, terrific.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Okay, there it goes. Wow, this, this is, this is special. This is, uh, thank you very much, Mayor Wernikoff and, and for the folks in the. Wow, we have a full house here of supporters. Um, I'm overwhelmed. So I have some things to say and I actually hopefully I don't get emotional, but I have it on paper. So I have a lot of people to thank. I may not get to everyone, but you, every one of you are special to me, so. Um, thank you for this, thank you for this proclamation acknowledging my service. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve Portola Valley as Public Works Director for the last twenty-two years. Um, filled with appreciation and gratitude. I was, I was able to build and maintain all your roads, your trails, storm drains. Parks, fields and buildings in this lead platinum town center. I was able to see some of the best homes built. Probably in America and the world. And work closely with the wonderful community to resolve any issues. Uh, I was able to respond to emergencies and winter events. Uh, it was an adventure and in total I was able to experience what I call the full PV. Uh, Portola Valley was like my backyard and Town Center was like my ADU. Um, most importantly, I was able to build great relationships with the community. Uh, residents, committee members, council members and staff. I gave it my best every day because it felt good to serve, work hard and be dedicated. Uh, the reward was seeing residents enjoy and enjoy the facilities and know that this is a special place. I've always felt welcomed by this community. It's volunteers and the committee members who learned a lot, who I learned a lot from to help me with my job. Thank you for mentoring me, teaching me the PV way, the culture and being there when I called and needed input on a project. That's teamwork. Thank you for welcoming me. I've always felt welcome here in the last twenty-two years by everyone in the community. And that's huge and it's part of my success here. Some names, I, I can't name everyone because remember everyone is special. Uh, I want to thank for memorable moments when I think about PV. Angela Howard. Who came today sitting here, uh, the town manager for hiring me and entrusting me. Our time together was truly an adventure. A lot of people say it's building the town center. It's actually getting to build the town center, getting to the point. Of building towns in it. Uh, one of the things I was tasked with was fixing the roads here. Um, and renovating our parks. So thank you Angela Howard for being here tonight. Uh, Steve Headland, Public Works Committee, his quote, keep it simple. Um, Bud Iceberg, the Lake Bud Iceberg, Public Works Committee, we do call him at night. Um, his quote, hey Howard, I seem to be getting a lot of after hour service calls about sewer backups. Uh, thank you Bud for sacrificing. Susan Gold of the Trails Committee, her quote, less is more, and I've really lived by that since I've been here. Less is more. Uh, next for being great role models and support to me. Bill Lane, uh, Jean Lane, Brenda Monks, George Mater, Tom Blasick. Bob Anderson, Joe Phil. Ted Driscoll, Ed Davis and Lynn Davis, yes, role models, both a couple. Uh, and the entire Dempsey family, which Danny Dempsey works at the fire department. Not much longer, just another two paragraphs. Uh, my wife and my family, my kids are here, Lance and Lauren, uh, for supporting me through the last twenty-two years. Uh, I have many fond memories here. I, I know almost every foot of street and much of the land by almost memory and mention. I have so much community support, it's overwhelming. Um, as I leave now for another opportunity and start the next chapter in my life. I wish you all well and continued success. Most importantly. To all the volunteers and residents, keep doing what you're doing to keep Portola Valley the beautiful and special place it is. Um, I'm going to end my speech now. With the most powerful quote I've learned in town. Um, someone I really respect. Um, I asked the previous late Mayor Ed Davis, a retired VP at IBM, very experienced person in life. What he could teach me about life from all his experiences, I'm like a sponge. He said to think positive and point in the positive direction. And all the surrounding vectors will start to point in that direction also. Thank you, Portola Valley.
Thank you, Howard. Uh, Judith, if you wouldn't mind, um. Just because I can't, I can't see the dais, would you mind facilitating on my behalf?
Yes, just a point of clarification. So we have some rules and procedures even though it's a very special moment. How do you want to proceed? You asked for the town council input, happy to do that. But what about the public? Are we waiting until after the?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so I'm sorry, just, just so everybody is aware that we are following a regular, you know, our standard procedure. Um, we, after, after a proclamation, sometimes we do have some, some council comments if in a special situation like this. Oral communications will come at the regular time, so, um, I was inviting, um, some, some comments from council if you'd like to make them now. Um, then my understanding is we have some refreshments in the back and we're going to take a little bit of, uh, ten, ten-minute break. Um, for a little bit of a reception, we'll come back and then we'll go back to the regular agenda. Have, um, per the, per the typical regular agenda, have the town manager report and oral communications and that would be the time for the public to provide their comments. So if you, if, if the council would prefer to give comments during oral communications, I apologize, it's a bit awkward. I can't really hear the room. Uh, if there's a conversation going on in the dais right now.
Mayor, we have, we're kind of having a little internal discussion, discussion. I think it's fine if we have public comment now, just so make sure that folks don't leave. But we still want to make sure and honor the break because we have a break. We want to have that cider and cookies with everybody, but. We can certainly have the council comments now if that's okay, and I'm seeing nodding heads. Um, have the community give their, um, public comments and then we can take our ten-minute break with the cider and cookies. Folks can then leave during that time if they need to, but that way we can, um, honor the folks that are here so they won't have to wait. Your call, Mayor, you're, you are running the meeting. Um, you'll be flexible either way.
Yeah, it sounds you were hearing, seeing, or I'm sorry, seeing head shaking, so that, that sounds great. So this will be, um, council comments and oral communications for all. This obviously and all other items not on the agenda, correct?
Well, I suggested just the first comments be for Howard and then the public comment can come again later.
Yeah.
Or can we, yeah.
I think we should focus on.
Can we move directly to public comments?
Well, no, I'm saying.
Isn't that the way we usually do it?
Comments on Howard now, public comments and other items later. I don't want to.
Let's just keep Howard's stuff.
Okay, guys. Sorry, Howard. Sorry, this is, is a little bit more graceful for you here tonight, so, um. It sounds like we're going to be taking public comment on this item right now, um, in addition.
And council comment, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, council, would you like to start?
I'll start if that's okay.
Sure.
I've worked with Howard for sixteen years now, uh, between ASCC and the council. And I guess, I don't want to, I don't want to talk for a long time, but I guess just a simple thing was just. The number of times that I've texted you about, you know, something that I saw on a walk. Where a wire was down or, you know, it looked like maybe a fire hydrant wasn't working properly and the number of times you called and how, how many times you responded and. Knew exactly what to do, who to call, what, what had to happen. Um, the number of questions you've answered off the cuff, um, over the years, uh, on this wide variety of topics. I, I really, it's, 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 um, it's been an honor to work with you, so I do wish you the best and, um, thank you for everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Mary.
There's nobody in the world to talk about more than Howard, to tell you the truth, but I feel that there's a lot of people here who, who want to say things about him. Uh, I have been dealing with Howard since the first day he came, uh, through Westridge and. Uh, and then through the Conservation Committee and through, uh, the Trails Committee. Uh, I've never had an unpleasant moment with Howard. He's always cared about what I cared about. He's always upheld the values of the town, sometimes more than I did. Which is hard to do because I really pretty much believe in this town with a passion. And, and sometimes he had to remind me of how important, uh, different aspects of the values of the town are. Uh, and that's permeated his relationship with every single person in, in the town. Uh, I have been totally amazed, of course, with the outpouring of, of affection and respect for you. Uh, during this, this last month or two, uh, just seems like, um, we all love you.
Thank you, Mary.
Great.
Um, so I want to wish you good luck as well, um, and. I can't even count the number of different committees and meetings that we've had on various things and you've always been great. Um, you've always stepped up. You didn't help me with informal problems, so, um, it's, it's always been appreciated, so again, I really wish you the best. Thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Sarah, I'll go next and then you can go if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Well, I have been in denial that you're leaving us and I will be in denial that you're leaving us, so I'm still going to think I better call Howard about this or that. And ask him how we got to this place on a given issue. Um, that's never going to change in my mind, uh, just so you know, and, and what that means is. You really have embodied the best of Portola Valley. I think the people who have mentored you. Um, you've done them proud. You, you embody the positive direction. You. Are public service-minded in the best possible sense. And, uh, that really goes, uh, in my mind to the fact that you're just a special person that absorbed the surroundings. And did what he could to use that and bring it forward. Um, on a very personal level, I thank you enormously for what you've done for this town, this community. And, um, you know, we will enormously miss you. But please know that you will be here in our minds, certainly in our thoughts and our hearts all the time. And hopefully whatever adventures you go to next, you will know that everyone here and everyone in the community is behind you and wishes you well. And will always admire what you've been able to achieve here. I do see on the dais some written remarks and I've skimmed through them. And I think they, they speak to other things I would speak to and I don't want to take more time, so. Uh, do know that those sentiments are shared and, um, don't be a stranger. Please stop by. I'd love to meet up for coffee in the Redwood Grove and, and keep in touch. Thank you, Howard, truly. Um, I'll hand it over to Sarah.
Um, Howard, yeah, I think, think, um. One, one of the things in listening to, to, to these remarks that I'm really happy to know is that also your family is in the room. Um, so that they can be here to see firsthand how, um, respected and appreciated you are in our community for your, your hard work and dedication. And I just want, you know, for sure for you to, to know and as I'm, you're hearing tonight that you've made a real difference. Um, and so thank you for all you've done. Um, and I'm looking forward to hearing, uh, the comments from the community, um, as well. So thank you, Howard.
Thank you both, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Um, I'm going to ask Cory, can you promote me, um, because I'm not able to see who might be online that wants to comment? But if they're.
I can do that. Well, I either, yeah, I, I can call on, um.
Yeah, you can, you can do that, but I, I'm here and I can see, how do you want to run it? Do you want to go, uh, the schoolhouse first or online?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I just couldn't see the, the council members. That, that's, that's the person. That's hard with me when I'm on Zoom, like, because the way the video camera works.
And Mayor, we do have speaker cards, so, um, Vice Mayor Haskell can certainly read those. So if, if I'm, if I can interrupt just real quickly, I do have one other thing. I was going to comment before we started. Uh, many folks have asked me as town manager, how you replace Howard? And the answer is you don't. Oh. That's my answer, and I just want to thank Howard for all your years of service, your integrity. And on Monday, I was contacted by, uh, Assembly Member Josh Berman's office and, um. Josh Becker's office, and I do have another commendation for you that I would like to read from the Assembly Member and from the Senator. And so this commendation, Howard, it's in honor of your twenty-two years of service for the town of Portola Valley. Warm congratulations on the completion of twenty-two years of exceptional service as the Director of Public Works for the town of Portola Valley. During your time with the town, you led the development and construction of the town center with integrity and vision. As a result of your dedication and commitment in this role, Portola Valley residents will enjoy a beautiful and sustainable gathering place for many years to come. On behalf of the thirteenth Senate District and twenty-third Assembly District, we honor your enduring commitment to the Portola Valley community. On this day, twenty-sixth day of June, twenty-twenty-four, and it's signed by Senator Josh Becker and Assembly Member Mark Berman. And I have that commendation for you here.
Oh, thank you.
That's so nice. Thank you, Cherie. Um, yeah, let's, let's start with, um, public comment. Uh, for those in the schoolhouse.
Okay, so I'll start with the speaker card. The first speaker card is for Tom Blasick.
If you indulge me, I'll read, um, my brief comments and then Leslie Lambert also submitted comments and I know that you received them, but she asked if I could read them into the record too, if that's okay. Okay. Um, honorable council members and members of the Portola Valley community. When I saw that you were to honor Howard tonight, I knew I had to come and share in this tribute. I started to list all that Howard has done for Portola Valley over the years. He has worked here and realized quickly that such a list would take forever to recite, so I'll keep my comments simple. I had the pleasure and honor of working with Howard for many years and am so grateful to have had his professional input and wisdom on so many planning projects. He is not only an intelligent and commensurate, um, professional public works director, but a wonderful person. Who has protected the values of the town at every challenge he has been presented with. I'm so grateful to have had him as a professional colleague and more importantly, as a friend. Howard knows the infrastructure of the town and all his idiosyncrasies better than anyone. Anyone would always get a straight answer and complete answer from Howard when questioned about the infrastructure conditions. A simple reflection of that is the item on your consent agenda tonight about road maintenance and rehabilitation funding. I'm sure Howard was able to put that together with what he had in his head. I know that over the years, Howard has not only protected the town's assets, but saved the community significant money. And how he has managed the public works projects and responsibilities. Wherever his next gig takes him, those he serves and works with will be extremely lucky to have his help and guidance. And Howard, if you ever want to reference, please reach out. Thank you. And then, um, Leslie. Um, and I was around for about forty years, so I kind of have time with her. And Leslie too, she was the planning manager for so long. And, uh, she, she submitted these, uh, words that I know you have. It was unexpected news to hear that Howard Young is leaving the town. When the town council hired Howard in two thousand and two, we as staff were thrilled to have someone with his background and characteristics. That he would specifically meet the goals of the town. The town is a special place and it needs an individual that will follow the direction and how the town is incorporated. Howard was that man. The town for years has benefited from his overview of all town projects and those projects that were unexpected. He has taken on more assistance to the town in so many ways, while not only did he serve the community well as the Public Works Director. Uh, at the same time, he held a position, an acting town manager while the town council was looking for someone to fill the manager position. The town has benefited through many years of his understanding and appreciation of the town community. Howard has been an individual that looks after the town. The town community will truly miss him. We thank you, Howard, for all your years with the town. Best to you and your family. Leslie Lambert.
Fred Leach.
Hey. Thank you, uh, council members. Um, I'm reading a letter that is, uh, signed by, uh, something like ninety-four different former, uh, chairs and vice chairs of various committees. Uh, so I will read at least through, through my time and then, uh, we'll hand over some, for some other folks who have co-signed it as well. Um, dear, uh, Mayor Wernikoff and members of the town council, we write to bring your attention to the record of excellence achieved. By Mr. Howard Young during his tenure of twenty-two years with the town of Portola Valley. As individual town residents who have had the privilege of serving as chairs and vice chairs of the town's commissions and committees. We have engaged and worked with Howard on a day-to-day basis and over the years. We are therefore in a strong position to speak to his qualities. Howard's service to the town and its residents embodies the meaning of professionalism, transparency and responsiveness. And Howard has demonstrated a deep commitment to the town's rural values and the safety of its residents. These are the attributes one hopes to find in a public servant dedicated to the town's well-being. And they are the attributes we have come to expect from the town through Howard's example. The following only skims the surface of Howard's professionalism and the invaluable role he has played in the daily workings of our town. The resilience of the town's infrastructure and the strength of the town's emergency response capabilities. Howard is responsive, whether called upon to address an emergency condition, a tree or landslide blocking a road or a trail that needs fixing. A call or email to Howard has meant that a response is forthcoming and that action will be coordinated and thoughtfully prioritized based on need. Howard is available and transparent in his thinking. He exercises sound judgment. Answering his own phone when he is not in the field, coordinating work with residents, committee members and staff, and explaining his reasoning and at times the town's limitations. Howard has earned the respect of town staff, residents and committees. He has a deserved reputation as one who could be counted on. Howard has deep knowledge of the town's infrastructure and its values. Howard knows the intricacies of our town's various infrastructure systems, systems that have been built up since our town. The historical town of Seersville was a logging and ranching community. He knows the strengths and vulnerabilities of our public and private drainage, power, communications, sewer, septic and water system. Importantly, he understands these systems in the context of local fire risk. Importantly, he understands these systems in the context of local fire risk and geological instability. Should we want to change, expand, or modify these systems, we can count on Howard to get it done. And done in a way that respects the rural character of the town and protects the town's natural resources and ecological system. Howard is forward-thinking and uses technology in the service of the town's core health and public safety needs. Howard has a deep and full knowledge of the town from the easements that underpin our trail system to the specific canyons that limit cellular and radio communication. He has employed technology to address vulnerabilities in conjunction with the town's emergency preparedness committee, and he has worked tirelessly to reduce fire danger by managing fuels in our road rights of way. Howard can be counted on to rise to the occasion. Howard stepped up to be the town's interim manager when we needed him, and he performed the duties with the skill and professionalism we have come to know and expect from him. He leads by example. By all accounts, he has been the first in office and the last to leave.
Um, I, I, I have a feeling that you only have a little bit more to go.
I do only have a little bit more to go.
Why don't you do your little bit more to go?
Okay. We count the town fortunate to have had Howard Young's service for 22 years. His conduct and dedication are the yardstick by which we will benchmark excellence. We will miss Mr. Young as our town's Director of Public Works, and we celebrate him as an indelible part of our community. The signatories here include former town mayors, current and former chairs and vice chairs, and our members of the following committees. Architectural Site and Control Commission, the Planning Commission, the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee, the Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee, the Conservation Committee, the Cultural Arts Committee, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, the Geological Safety Committee, the Historic Resources Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Public Works Committee, the Race and Equity Committee, the Trails and Paths Committee, and the Wildfire Preparedness Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Terri Lee.
Um, Terri Lee, um, also representing town uh, volunteers and citizens. Howard, I'm so delighted to um, uh, be here echoing and amplifying what uh, Fred has already remarked on, on behalf of, of the almost 100 people that just signed that letter for you. I just want to add to yourself, to your family, uh, who may not have always been able to see, feel, and experience the way you uh, contributed to and added to um, the life and experience of our town uh, and its citizens, um, how grateful uh, we are uh, to your personal and professional service. Um, big difference maker from someone who's been in the real estate industry for 40 years. Um, you are at the top of the list of professionals. Um, and we're so grateful and the beneficiaries of, of your care and kindness and professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri. Next is Ed Holland.
Thank you, Howard. Uh, I hope everybody can hear me. Uh, it has been a great honor as uh, Chair of Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety for the last 12 years to have worked with you on all the projects that we uh, contributed with your support. And I hope some of our support to you. Um, I can't say anything more than what's been said here already, but thank you very much for all your time given to the town. And I know, again, I represent part of the letter that was uh, read here tonight by Fred. Thank you, who was able to complete the whole thing. Thank you, council, for that. And just again, Howard, thank you very much. Keep doing what you do and keep everybody following you in that positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Nicholas Targ. Nicholas, I actually note that you have two. Are you intending to have two? So we will count this one as one. Okay. Thank you. Just checking in.
So, my name is Nicholas Targ. Uh, I'm, I'm a Howard Young fan. Howard has known you for 22 years. And uh, I've got to say, this is my first time speaking at this podium during a public comment. I've been on a planning mission for at least 12 years, maybe now. But I want to amplify the words that have been spoken. I don't have much more to add other than to remind you of some of the words used there. And this is from the Almanac on July 31, 2002. Portola Valley Public Works Director Has a Full Play. By Sharon Driscoll. Since Portola Valley's public director, Howard Young, joined the town's small staff of 11 on June 3, he's been hard at work playing catch-up. He's, the post has been vacant and piling up since his predecessor. There's a lot to do, says Mr. Young. Who was San Mateo, who was raised in San Mateo and graduated in 1993 with degrees in civil engineering from Santos State University. He works closely with the Trails uh, Committee on Maintenance and Repairs, currently uh, getting hold of the tree maintenance and planned resurfacing of 11 roads in town. Big projects on tap include uh, Housing Subdivision, Woodside Priory School for three homes, approximately 12 acres. Planning to rebuild Town Hall, a complete overhaul of the Rosati's Field in 202003. I'm a hands-on engineer, says Mr. Young. I like to get in the field. After graduating from Santos State in 1993, he went back home with going to San Mateo Civil Engineering Staff. He's been working throughout the Bay Area, Metro uh, area, fiber, uh, installing communications, art. He says he's happy to be back in the public sector. The reason I left uh, private industry was to get back working directly with the community, oh, yeah. I'm happy to be here, happy to take on the challenges. He says he believes the town's commitment, open space, environment, this is a beautiful area. And I'd like to help keep it work. Thank you for the words I think you executed on your plan of 22 uh, years. And I can only appreciate your, and that's that.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Okay, Rita Comus Whitney.
Well, Howard knows how I feel about him, but you know, I, I speak for myself, but I talk to a lot of people in the community, and Howard is really appreciated by the residents. He listens, he's knowledgeable, he knows how to call others to help when he can't figure something out. He works hard to understand what the issue means to you, even if you're not being as neighborly with your requests as you should be. He finds a way to help you. His time as temporary town manager is not noted in the proclamation, but he stepped up while still doing his day job. He has made a difference and was always reachable. If not, he called you back, even if it was late at night. And it's really appreciated because if we're reaching out to you, we actually have a need. Thank you to his family for sharing him with us. We really appreciate it because he's done so much for us. I just hope, you know, he's putting away his dishes at night and whatnot at home. And uh, the residents are going to be meeting in front of the town hall tomorrow morning at 8:30. Uh, bring, bring your own coffee. We're having our own little tea party uh, to say goodbye to Howard. So bring a snack or a donut to share, something healthy, not a donut.
Thank you, Rita. The last card I have is Dan Siegel. Don Siegel? Dan.
Thank you, Mayor Wernikoff, from Town Council. I'm Dan Siegel of Jorgensen Siegel McLeod of Legel. And I bring our thoughts and honor to Howard Young on behalf of myself, my former colleagues Lee Prince and Kara Silver, my current colleagues Bill McClure, Minnie Romanowski, Candace Stymets, especially Kent Mitchell, who was first elected in 1976 to this town council and served as mayor. And Sandy Slough. Howard, Sandy is so disappointed not to be here to honor you tonight. She is traveling or otherwise she would be here to tell you and the community how dedicatedly you serve them. Sandy's note. During my legal career, I spent much of my time serving as an attorney for government agencies. Fire District, Water District, Community Services District, three cities, including my almost 20 years as town attorney for Portola Valley. Needless to say, I developed strong opinions about what trait makes a good public servant. Howard Young epitomizes those traits. Howard is smart and capable, responsible, hardworking, and loyal. But he also understands that a staff member serves the public. Howard listened to the residents, respected the residents, and responded to the residents. Served the residents well for many years. The town was blessed to have him as the public works director. I consider myself lucky to have worked with Howard, and I wish him well in whatever he chooses to do. I too am here to thank and to honor Howard. The reason the room is packed tonight is that everyone, residents, former council members, former staffing consultants, even attorneys, enjoyed working with Howard. Because he was a consummate professional, highly skilled, and he always had the interest of town in mind. Attorneys and public work directors do not always get along. Public work directors want to build, and attorneys are often more conservative. However, Howard understood how to communicate what and why a task needed to be undertaken, what its urgency was, and he also understood that there were rules, while sometimes ridiculous, which needed to be followed. He made it easy to work with him, and he understood how to explain complicated matters to dense attorneys. More important, the town's residents respected him. I've been involved in numerous matters where dueling parties stated that if it works for Howard, or Howard thinks it's a good idea, then it works for me. Howard might have been able to make the Hatfield and McCoys come together. This skill will be severely missed in town. I and my partners, retired partners, are sad to see Howard go. The town is better because of Howard, and wherever he applies his substantial skill, the next will profit from the town's loss. Howard, you are a pleasure to work with, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you. All right. Um, others in the schoolhouse who may wish to address uh, the topic, please, Dana, Dana Breen.
I wrote it down because otherwise I'm going to cry. Hey, you. Good evening. Dana Breen, 4680 Alpine Road. Howard and I have worked together the entire time that you've been here, in one capacity or another. And I just want to say, look who's here tonight. I mean, Tom's here. I mean, you guys. And, and, and Angie's here. And we um, the letter is signed by, you know, 95% of our current government, of appointees by our town council. You know, the people, I mean, the people and the government of our town is having a hard time with this. Oh. Tom Blasick, our brilliant town planner and one of the authors of our general plan. Having been in our government for 30 years, I was schooled pretty hard by previous councils who understood that our elegant and exquisite plan was the bomb and the work that we did was in conformance with the plan, that what all of us did. Howard, you got that. You understood it and respected our self-governance. Both you and Tom worked for us so that we could keep that reliance on the plan and the beautiful ethos of the town. I'm so grateful to both of you. I'm so glad I get to talk to Tom tonight, and, and thank you for everything he's done. And Angie too, that you're in the room. My God. It's been one of the great gifts of my life to participate in the government of this town. What you hear tonight is deep appreciation for you helping us to do this professionally and with great empathy to our residents and with great respect that we all have for each other. So three minutes, Howard. Howard, thank you for flowers and seeds. All the things. Poppies in the spring, helping during the hellacious storms that we have, fixing my reroute control. I mean, I couldn't have done it without him. Um, waddling the creek for hanging with me during Christmas parties, walking the frog pond with us, and understanding the nature around us, and always answering the damn phone. I mean, it's amazing. It started to make me laugh. He answered the phone, because you're the only one. Cheyenne used to answer the phone when she was here. Um, actually, so Sharon and Sharon, I bet you're listening. So Sharon, if you're listening, I mean, we love you guys too. And I, it's just been a rough year. So I'm going to miss you because you listen to me and you understand and respect us. In the period of the last six or seven years, we've gone away from our staff relationships. So I'm profoundly sad for myself and our self-government and my town. I promised you that I would leave you in peace. I promised that, but I wish I could chain you up. And so do many other people in our town. Peace, Howard.
Thank you, Dana. All right, anyone else? Uh, okay.
I'm Paul Heiple. I'm uh, one of the few people who's not actually a member of the town. I'm from Ladera. I volunteered to come here and help Portola Valley with their plants, and the plant. And Howard, I met him and we started to talk about the weeds, the rare plants. And he really worked getting them done. I really appreciate it. The weeds began to disappear. I just can't help saying I'm going to miss you a whole lot. I, I really miss that I didn't get to talk to you for the last X years when I wasn't Chair, because we weren't supposed to bother me. I didn't want to bother, but I really wish I did. Howard, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. Are there others in the schoolhouse that wish to say anything? If not, Sarah, I don't see any other hands in the schoolhouse right now, and I'll turn it over to you to go over anyone online. I don't know that there is anyone.
I don't see hand. I think everybody, oop, we have one hand raised. Patty Dews. Patty?
Hi, yes, I'm just getting on mute. Can you hear me?
We can.
Howard, um, thank you. Howard, I agree with everything that's been said tonight, so I won't repeat it. But I wanted to offer my personal thanks and gratitude to you and your fantastic uh, public work staff for your support of Parks and Recreation. Thanks to you, our kids and adults. Uh, in this town have some of the finest recreational parks and facilities in the entire Bay Area. And even though I know you wanted to roll your eyes every time I mentioned pickleball, dog park, and now bocce court, you know, you didn't. You answered every question, every proposal, every crazy idea with the same professionalism and action that you did for everything else that you do for this town. So thank you. And when we get that dog park, you'll be the first on the invite list. Thank you.
I don't see, thank you, Patty. I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any, any last-minute additions from the schoolhouse? Judith?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay, with that, then I will close public comment on this portion of the meeting and leave you guys to um, join in, in the back of the schoolhouse there for a little reception um, to celebrate Howard.
What time do you want people back, Sarah? It's 10:02.
Yeah, you guys want to give us 15 minutes? Okay, so let's, let's meet back at uh, at uh, 11, or I'm sorry, uh, 8:05?
Nope.
Okay, great. Um, and thank you. And um, moving on to our next agenda item, which will be the town manager report, and then we will have another opportunity for oral communications for items not- And then we will have another opportunity for oral communications for items not on the agenda and not related to the proclamation. Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor. In honor of tonight's Howard's night, I just want to reiterate and thank Howard for his years of service and we wish him the best. And that's my report for tonight.
Okay. Great. Do we have any hands in the schoolhouse for oral communications?
Yes, there are two. I'll call on Carolyn Vertonghen first.
I'm just using my minutes in oral communication because we don't always have an opportunity during consent agenda. However, if we will get an opportunity to speak, I will wait until the consent agenda. But I have comments for item C and E.
I believe there will be.
Yeah, we always have oral, we always have public comment for consent agenda. So do you have a, do you have something that's not on the agenda, Carolyn?
No.
No, okay. Next is Rita Comas Whitney.
Hi, Rita Comas Whitney, and I just want to say that there are many people in this town. I've always looked at the warrant list since I've been here and had access. And now it's much easier since everything is online and I look at the warrant list every.
The warrant list is on the consent agenda.
The approval of the warrant list is on the consent agenda. But this is just a suggestion for something in general, not the particular items that are on the consent agenda. The warrant list is, I think it's one point, one and three quarters of a million dollars, almost two million dollars. But from the past couple of meetings, you know, people have been asking for a way to see what are the receivables? You know, there's lots of items that are on the consent agenda that say what we're paying out. If there can be added either an asterisk, I don't care what, it could be a smiley face, just to show that we're billing back out for those charges because it's, it's really unclear. And, you know, for a lot of people in the town, they're just starting to look at the warrant list and they just see money going out and money being spent and new names being added. So it's not a consent agenda item, but this is something that we need, we really need. So Tony, it's really nice to meet you and I, and I, I hope that you hear me. And my other comment, which is not, item not on the agenda. When you're doing the reports from different meetings, committee meetings, the people in the diocese are giving comments from and reports from those meetings at the end of the past couple of town council meetings, the public is not being asked for their own statements. And the very next comment that's made is, let's close this meeting. Somebody else makes a vote and we're disconnected on Zoom. You know, I'm usually on Zoom. As a single parent, I'm usually on Zoom and I, I made an exception to be here tonight. But I, I really hope you hear me. And so after the reports towards the end of the meeting, please ask for the residents' comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Are there any other hands raised in the schoolhouse?
No.
All right, I do not see any hands raised on Zoom. So I will close item number, agenda number four, oral communications and move on to the consent agenda. Looking to the council, are there any items that council members are interested in pulling on the consent agenda?
I think we want to do public comment for the consent agenda. That's usually what we do is consent, public comment, then we decide if we're going to pull anything and then we go.
Okay. Public comment on the consent agenda, sorry.
Carolyn Vertonghen.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you very much, Carolyn Vertonghen. We love this community and that's why we come and support you. That's why we come with our questions, with our comments and our suggestions. Like I said, I had a comment and I hope you got it. I sent it by email yesterday before noon time. I have a problem with the approval of reauthorizing the town treasurer as the authority for the management of the town's investment program, meaning that this, the treasurer, that this position is given to the town manager. I'm asking you to wait. When we were at the finance committee, one of the suggestions was to use best practices. And they asked us, look what other towns are doing. So we did a little survey. It was a little last minute. But we didn't get any response from Attretin. No surprise, they're in different tax breaks and stuff. City of Melbrey, the same thing, but they're very into San Mateo County services. But then the city of San Mateo has a finance director, is the treasurer. City of Belmont, the finance director is the treasurer. City of San Carlos has a finance director who is appointed by the town manager and an independent treasurer and a manager of administrative services. And San Carlos is actually putting a measure and that will come for the elections and asking the residents to make a decision at the elections. Second question is, I support to have the commissioner, and that is under item E. We need a commissioner and I'm very happy that you chose Gavin Welch. But the sheriff is, the contract is much more than just services to control traffic and parking. We have a lot of going on and we don't get response from the sergeant. We have asked several times that you put contact information on the website and that we have somebody in case of an emergency. That is not completely part of, of, of the police department. But Howard was here for emergencies. You need someone else. It used to be the town manager. And when he was on vacation, it was Assistant Town Manager Brandy, Brandy. So, but then there were other people that we needed to reach when they were not in office. So we need those contact numbers and please do so. Through the BPTS, we found out we only have one officer and we, and it's shared with Woodside. We also have one community officer and it's shared with different districts. That's not what the contract says and many other services need to be, have oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other hands in the schoolhouse?
No, I don't see, oh, yes. Hold on. Come on up, Kristi.
Yeah, just regarding the sheriff, would I say it now or at a later time?
What, you want to comment on the consent agenda item for the commissioner? Is that what you're trying to?
The commissioner, or I, I want to get the processes better for when there's burglaries in town as if it's after hours, if it's after four o'clock.
This is, this is for oral communications on the consent agenda. So the items that are on the consent agenda.
So is the sheriff on the consent in any way?
No.
Okay, so that's what I was asking. Do I speak about this later? Thank you.
Any other hands raised?
I don't see any.
Okay, and I do not see any on Zoom. So I will bring it back to the council regarding the consent agenda. Is, are there any items any council member would like to pull?
Not for me. I'd like to pull five C.
Five C, okay.
Nothing for me.
Mary, anything? All right, then I would love to entertain a motion for items five A, B, D and E.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alf.
Aye.
Councilmember Hufte. Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell.
Aye.
Mayor Wernicke.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Corey. All right, Craig, would you like to address item five C?
Sure. Yeah, it was really just a question. And, you know, Sharif, this is aimed to you. I was interested in the advantages and disadvantages of having the town manager be the treasurer versus the finance director be the treasurer. What are the kind of the pros and cons? How, how should we think about that?
I think the biggest pro of having the treasurer two different people is you get a, a level of control. You get a level of, you have two different people looking at the treasury. There are many towns, if you survey towns up and down the state, you'll find that it's probably half and half. Sometimes the treasurer is the director of finance, sometimes it's the city manager. It just depends on the town. By having the treasurer be the town manager, you then also have a director of finance that also looks at the treasury. And so it's not giving someone control over one thing or the other. It's just delegating authority, if you will. And so in this instance, it's in your municipal code. That's what we've done every year. And basically now you have the town manager who's the treasurer, but then you also have a director of finance who's in charge of the finances. So you actually have two professionals, if you will, looking at it. And so a town this small, I think it's actually a pro if you have it in two different people as opposed to one, one person. You can certainly change that and you can have the director of finance be the treasurer, but then you're just limited to one person looking at the treasury and assigning authority. It really is not that much of a difference either way.
Right, okay, so I mean.
You still have dual authority, you still have dual control, you still have your internal controls, all those different pieces.
Right.
Regardless of who's designated as the, the town treasurer.
Right, and it, and it's in our town ordinance.
It's in your town ordinance.
So we'd have to change the ordinance if we wanted to change the treasurer.
Correct.
Yeah, perfect. Great, thank you.
Judith, did you, oh, sorry, question on that.
Mary has a question.
Yeah, I have, I have some questions about this and I talked to Sharif at, at pretty great length about this, this afternoon. So I feel quite reassured on your question, Craig, that, that there is some advantage of having both the CFO and the, and the manager have some oversight. My, my question was more for the, I think the lawyer probably, which is, and this might, completely my ignorance, is, isn't, can't the finance committee, can, is there any possibility for a volunteer to be, to serve as the treasurer as it would happen in a not-for-profit?
So I.
To make sure, the two reasons why I'm bringing this up is because we have failed in our, in our, what was written and what is written here, which is that we're supposed to have a, a monthly report by the state on, on our revenues right here under attachment two. Or no, attachment one, I guess, is the state. And we haven't been getting that. And the audit, we haven't gotten, as you know, you've heard plenty of times, three years. And so we're, we're having a problem with oversight. And is there a role for a volunteer or for the residents to actually be able to say? There's, there are other people who need to be, if, if in fact things fall apart in town, in the town hall, when do the residents get to take control?
So I, I think your question is more sort of a best, maybe perhaps best practices. But I can answer it in terms of what is currently written, both in your code and, and currently what is the law. So what is the law, the state law is that the, that the treasurer, sorry, that the authority of the legislative body to invest may be delegated for a period of one year by the legislative body to the treasurer of the local agency. Now, the treasurer under your municipal code is the town manager. But there'd be a few things that you'd need to change is your, you know, municipal code. And perhaps the second question, which would probably require a little bit of research as to whether that treasurer could be somebody outside of the municipal government would need to be seeing that. We'd need to look into. But perhaps your question is more sort of a best practices type of, of question.
Yeah, what happens in an emergency when, for example, nobody's available and you need to change it in an investment? And the residents are the only people here.
That is, that is a good question and there should be some emergency provisions. I'm not too familiar with the municipal code, but I.
This is it. I went through the municipal code. This is all, this is all you get from our municipal code. We've got very little guidance.
There is an emergency procedure sort of that the town would follow if there was nobody in that capacity to serve.
I don't think that this particular function is directed to in that. And, you know, I just wonder whether the finance committee has some obligation there for staffing in. If the audits are not being done, if the bills are not paid, if we haven't been getting the monthly statement, when, when, what is our recourse as residents?
Councilmember Hufte, just to remind you, there's a difference between what's the law and what's best practice and just mismanagement. Right? Our finances have been mismanaged and you have a new town manager, you have a new finance director and our number one priority is bringing the integrity back to the finances. And that ultimately is having a, a regular report, whether it's monthly, also your quarterly reports and also regular investment reports, which you haven't had for three or four years. And so many of those things will be addressed by just being managed.
Don't get me wrong. I have total hope and faith.
Right.
I have total faith and I'm doing the positive thing that Howard told me to do.
And then you as council hold me accountable as town manager to make sure that we hold
Yeah.
our staff accountable to make sure we get this done moving forward.
It's just that I, I think that, and what I think is we're doing is the best, which is having the CFO and the, and the town manager. And I think, I feel satisfied with the solution. I just want there to be an emergency sort of fallback so that when we get, so that we don't get lulled into this again and again and again.
But this is the council's responsibility.
I was going to say it's the council. We're the ones that are accountable.
We're the public. We represent the public. So the fact that.
That's what I'm saying, but we need, we, we need to be strong. We can't just say, yes, 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 yes.
Okay, agreed.
So, Sarah, if I could just, so for example, if the town manager is not available for whatever reason, we have a gap, Renee. So the question is, what's the next step? I would imagine that the town council could pass some kind of interim resolution or, or just appoint someone to take care of a missing function. But you could do it at the moment and it, I guess another thing we could do is assess whether it's important to look at emergency, an emergency procedure to add to the, to this attachment in the future.
So that, that is certainly one way to go. If there's not already a procedure for addressing those issues, sort of emergency succession plan where folks step into those roles when someone is not available. So if that's not already covered, that certainly could be something that could be considered in the future.
I don't see it anywhere.
Councilmember Hufte, remember, your, your question is a valid question. It's a very good question. I don't, it's not the question for the treasurer and what's at, before you today as council. Keep in mind, any type of movement of money that we require, not only by best practice, by law, by audit, is you have to have two people. So you never have just one person moving money. I cannot pick up the phone and move one million dollars tonight by myself. It has to be done with co-signature or co-authority with the assistant town manager or with our director of finance. And so you have to have two people in place at any time. That's for internal control and that's for oversight, obviously. So if I'm on vacation, you have to make sure that two people can move money. If someone else is on vacation, two people need to be present.
And it can't be at all.
Also, keep in mind, barring any emergency, moving money is hardly ever an emergency. It can wait until, you know, Monday or the next week or whatever it may be. And so we can certainly work at emergency protocol as we talk about. It's not just for treasury, it's for everything else. It's for signing authority. It's for who's going to run to the bank and do something. How do we get three tractors here by the morning, all those things? That's what we're working on, certainly as staff is the emergency piece. So I think your, your question is certainly valid. It's just, it's only one portion of what we're doing with the treasurer authority. It's also a bigger question.
Well, I, I guess I, I want to make the point that the state of California government code calls for a monthly report of all transfers and transactions. And I have not seen that.
Correct. And again, it's in the Christian company report. It's what we're working on and we are.
There's nothing wrong with doing it this month.
We can't. It's not possible. We are trying to get caught up on the prior years. Then we can do a current year monthly report. As soon as we get caught up, we have promised and we will deliver a monthly report. It will happen. It is not possible to pull it out right now with integrity because there are entries missing. And we'll make sure that.
But are we getting a field here? I mean, this is, this is about reauthorizing the town.
Yeah, I was going to say we're off.
I just read the description. I just read the description of what this, we're authorizing them to do. And that is to get a monthly report of these transactions. And I, I. And I, I understand that, it's just, I realize that we can't. And it's, it's not pretty if we do submit it. But we need to have something, be it completely fallacious or at least with an explanation.
Mary, Mary, if you don't mind, we, we do need to stay on topic for this agenda item. This agenda item is approving these two roles in the structure. It's not, it's not a discussion of how various things within the roles and responsibilities are done and when. And so I, I would recommend, you know, if you want to pursue it, that we figure out either for you to have us, another conversation with Sharif about that, or for you to bring your thoughts forward in a colleague's memo. But we need to focus on this agenda item.
Agreed.
Which is real.
I appreciate that you two agree on this, but I also think that it's very important that we at least get some information in front of the council once a month.
And Sharif just agreed with you on that point and he's working towards that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Craig, you're the one who originally brought this, pulled this agenda item. Judith, I thought maybe I heard questions from you as well, do you have a question on this?
Well, my, my question was super pragmatic, what happens if we don't approve this? We have no Treasurer, so therefore we have to have a solution for tonight. And then I would think if there are improvements to this, that's a future discussion if people feel it's appropriate.
That's good perspective, all right.
So I'd like, I'd like to move that we approve five C.
Is there a second? Thank you, roll call vote.
Councilmember Alfes?
Aye.
Councilmember Hufte?
Abstain.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the regular agenda, item six A. Discuss and review the timelines for the post-adoption plan activities, Judith and Craig.
Yeah. How do you wanna team this, Craig? All right. There was recently discussion of the status of the post-adoption plan. We have been inundated by a lot of focus on the housing element and our compliance with HCD Reno requirements and getting our zoning passed. So in the course of those discussions, a lot of questions were being asked about what the Outreach Subcommittee was doing, which is part of the post-adoption plan generally. And then additionally, where we were in terms of implementing the post-adoption plan. And so what Craig put together the Gantt chart of all of the post-adoption plan items and in short form, and you'll find that on page thirty-seven. And it's a pretty simple chart, I would, the, the few things I would note are, time has slipped, we didn't get our, our housing element approved. So what Craig and I did was look at where we have as end of our sunrise provision and kind of back, back off and figure out how the processes that need to get us to a position of knowing, is there an alternative? Do we have in place the right zoning and everything else we need to do to put in place an alternative? And if not, what are we doing to prepare for the required RFPs? Should we be forced to move forward with Dorothy Ford Park? So those are items that are summarized here, items, Topic One, Topic Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight. They're laid out here, some of these are in fact done. Craig's noted in the name of the topic that these items are completed, the zoning, for example, is completed. The, the policy on our use of affordable housing funds is completed. And then the, in order to refresh people's memory, because it's been a long time since we've been operating with respect to these topics, I attached an old post-adoption plan status summary so that people could look and say Topic One was generally the housing site inventory follow-up. Topic 1.1 was evaluate and propose sunrise opportunity sites. So use that document, which we did not change, we just eliminated some information and simplified it. That's from an old presentation and the timing in the Gantt chart is the new presentation. Or our thoughts on how these things can fit together to get to that inflection point at the end of the post-adoption or the sunrise period. One, the other thing I would note is we didn't have a lot of time to work with the planner, Planning Department to understand some of the timelines and those are noted at the bottom in Items eighteen through twenty-one of milestones. So we need some further input and refinement of what planning processes need to be put in place in order to, for example, understand if reconfiguring Ford Field, if we need to do that, how long that would take, how long it would take to zone alternate sites and how long it would take to have an RFP proposal out. So Items eighteen through twenty-one are variables, we didn't lock in and we, I mean, all of this should be viewed as somewhat fluid because we're still waiting for HCD's final input on the housing element. And some of this will, might need to be rethought depending on what we hear. But we wanted to put it out there, see if the Town Council thought these were logical steps and logical timeframes and we're happy to go through any questions that you have. But the idea was just to let people see a start and a stop date for the different items under these topics. Craig, feel free to cover anything I didn't.
So I'd add a couple of other things, I built this using free software, there's a lot of limitations to that. So as a consequence, things like the long-term planning efforts, I just capped it out kind of in 2027 so that this chart didn't turn into a very long and very small to read. And then there's a question about when we're gonna start working on the safety element. And without a Planning Director, that's, that was another one that we think that these numbers make sense based on conversations with Planning Director in the past. But sort of waiting for John to come by and say, okay, yeah, you know, I'm blessing this whole thing, where he can look at all the dates at one time. That's it, thank you. No, I'd say, questions?
Yeah. Yeah, would you guys, Jeff and Mary, questions?
I don't have any questions right now.
Mary, do you have any questions?
No.
Um, all right, I, one question I have is, if I'm, thank you, first of all, thank you for this update and for the pulling together the timetable and providing the background as a refresh to everybody about what, what has been agreed to so far. To make sure that I'm understanding it right, is, are, is the expectation at this point that the, that the ad hoc post-approval committee would be selected in, would begin in August? Maybe if you guys could elaborate a little bit about your thoughts on, on that and if I'm, I'm reading that correctly?
I think that's right, we have, yeah, more likely September because August we were thinking would not be a productive month.
So, so like the first, the first meeting in September, are you thinking?
Meeting of what? Me, they would have their first meeting, we would appoint them in that time period. I don't see us being able to appoint them before that given our current agenda, but we can make that happen if the council feels that's needed.
Okay, I mean, Jeff and I can share with you if you're interested how we, how we did it last time. But I'm just kind of curious, like how, what, do you guys have thoughts yet on your process of how you're gonna be soliciting committee members and interviewing them and, I mean, if the goal would be appointing by the first meeting in September, all of that would have happened, obviously, you know, the solicitation and all of that would have happened prior to that.
We weren't that granular, I mean, I, I thought we would start the process in September, given that no one's gonna be around and volunteering in August, just pragmatically. And the guidelines that we put out previously here, the ad hoc committee is intended to consist of, and we can always change it, but it's intended to consist of Town Committee, Commission and Council Members along with Town Residents. That, that's like the rough, rough idea and so that, that's what we would have to flesh out. And the question is, do we wanna have a council meeting where we discuss that and decide on the process or do you want a Subcommittee to make a proposal on it? I can go either way.
Yeah, I think the thing I would suggest is that, I mean, why don't we reach out and talk to you and maybe, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this exactly, maybe we do, I can talk to Jeff and you can talk to Sarah, I'll talk to Sarah and you talk to Jeff, so that we don't violate Brown Act.
Got it in a public meeting, I think, but I don't think, we can't do it that way.
I would be, I would be fine with the two of you continuing and just sort of coming with the process. It will take some time to recruit and, and obviously advertise and all that, but I would be fine with you guys just managing that.
Okay.
And, and just because this is, this is probably our one opportunity, because we can't talk about it otherwise, is, you know, to Jeff's point, you've gotta post the opportunity, give people time to apply, do the interviews, select, so. So maybe, you know, in the, in the, I think there's gonna be another update in late, in the meeting in August. Maybe I'm conflating that with the Subcommittee Report, but maybe there'll be more detail at that point. I think another question I had related to that was, and this doesn't need to be an answer right now, but is if you're assuming the purview and the details that are listed in your previous document about what the ad hoc committee will be doing, it's page forty in the packet. Like this ad hoc committee would work with and then it lists, you know, number one through number four. Would be interested to know if, you know, in your next update, if that's still how you envision the role now that you've learned a little bit along the way. Unless, unless you already know that, I guess to make it a question, unless you already know that that's consistent with how you envision it. Working.
Yeah, well, it sounds like what's useful for tonight is just talk about, so we need to post the opportunity. We need to select the members, when you guys worked on this, was this a month roughly long process?
Yes.
Month and a half, I mean, what?
I think a month, yeah, it was, I mean, it was, you, you advertise and you probably want a couple of weeks to leave it up for a couple of weeks for people to apply. And you probably should wait till September so that people are back from traveling and such. So you probably want two weeks where you wait for applications to come in and then you're gonna need a week to arrange all the interviews. I think, I mean, I'd, to be safe, I'd probably say allow two weeks because just people will be on different schedules and stuff, I'd say, yeah, I'd say look at it in a month.
And then are the interviews by the council, by the Subcommittee, what's?
Sub, you guys.
Okay, so Subcommittee will do the interviews and then we would bring a, sort of a panel, so to speak, to the council for approval?
Yes, that is what we did.
Okay.
That's exactly what we did.
All right, so that's, that's very helpful, thank you.
And in that, kind of the criteria of, you know, assuring a broad range of people and all of that kind of stuff. Maybe in your application, when you think through it, you'd be thinking through your goals in terms of the makeup of the committee.
And presumably we can look at the, at the last ad hoc, it's sort of a template to sort of think about what things we wanna think about.
I'd like to think so.
Yeah.
That's a good question, which gives, brings me to my, my next question, I noted here that it looked like maybe the repository work had begun. Are there any updates about the repository?
There are not.
Okay.
Just that we, we felt like now's the time to start, so.
And so will you guys, I know that that had been described as a working group, that was another thing, you know, when we've done working groups in the past, you know, we brought it forward to council, so however you guys wanna create that working group. When we did the ADU working group, the Subcommittee, how, it was less of a form, it was not as formal as the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee meeting because it was not, it was a non-Brown Act group. But that group was selected through a more casual process, but then the, the group was, I don't, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that group was, it was noticed to the council, we'll have to go, you, you guys can go back and look, it was noticed to the council, I don't know if it had to be approved by the council. I don't think it was, to be honest.
Is this the, is this the ADU working group?
Yeah, correct.
I would guess it couldn't have been because otherwise it's probably a Brown Act committee.
Exactly, exactly, but we did inform, you know, the community who was on that working group.
Yeah.
So let, let me just use my public forum here to, you know, if there's anybody who would like to join this small group of volunteers, please let Judith or I know. Other questions?
Yeah, I guess my, well, I, I think my next one is more comments and questions, hold on one minute. Okay, I, I think. Yes, no more questions for me, I do see, Mary or Jeff, before I go to public comment on this, do you have any? Additional?
No, I do not.
Okay, going to public comment on this item, Dave Cardinal. David, it looks like, there you go.
No, thanks, it's yet to display. So one tactical comment is, I was, as the son of someone who worked on the Apollo project and relevant, that's where they invented Gantt and CPM. But I'm guessing that almost no one knows what a Gantt chart is. So I prefer, if people are saying that stuff is late or not late, they just say it. Because I don't think that saying it's on a Gantt chart is, is all helpful, just a thought. Also on the transparency, Craig, Transparency Committee, if there's a clear defined goal, which I haven't seen, and a set of resources, I would be potentially happy to volunteer, I was in the town's very first website committee twenty-five years ago. But I don't, I don't know what, what they're trying to achieve or how they're trying to do it. So that would be good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave, and I will follow up with you. And I would say that in this particular case, the Gantt chart is really just a mechanism for showing a timeline, because that was, the council asked for some kind of timeline that they could.
We can just take the comments and then.
Yeah, I, yeah, fair enough.
Thank you, are there any hands raised in the schoolhouse?
No.
I don't see any additional hands raised on Zoom, so I will close public comment on this item and bring it back for discussion. Any discussion comments? Jeff or Mary?
I can, I can, I can start. Thank you, this is actually, it's very helpful to see all this in one place, obviously, you know, timeline slip, it happens. But, but I think this actually is, it's really clear, I think it's really helpful for me just seeing what, you know, everything that's, we're trying to get to happen and I'm, I don't, I don't, I mean, the, actually, the item was to consider adopting, I'm not sure we, I'm not sure I would formally.
It's reviewing this now.
Just keep it as a, as a, as a, you know, as a timeline so that we all know what should be happening and what should be happening. You know, where we're at, so thank you.
It's nice to see it, it's nice to see it laid out, I really appreciate it.
And Jeff, I would say we're just trying to, to discuss it and review this, it wasn't meant to be an adoption.
Other than just the, the comments about, about the recruitment process, I don't have any, I don't have any major comment.
Great, and that's really helpful, thank you.
Thank you, I agree, it is helpful. I agree, it is helpful, um, to see it laid out. Um, I guess in terms of the discussion, are you guys comfortable with, would you like to set a dial, a deadline of when you would want to bring forward, uh, the creation, like the approval of the, um, ad hoc committee? Or at this point, you, you feel more comfortable just saying September sometime?
I, I'm comfortable right now for saying September. Um, I, I think the next step is, um, I think your input was useful and we'll figure out what kind of post we need to get ready. Um, and I think this meeting serves sort of notice for people who are interested to start thinking about it as well. Um, so I think that's, that'll be the next step. And, and some of it's going to depend on when the council's around and when people are around. So I, I want to be a little bit careful that we don't sort of turn this into a hard deadline that we don't have any control over. Um, but I do appreciate that this isn't going to just turn on a dime, that, you know, that there's at least a, a month lead time in here that we need to factor in.
Okay. Another, actually, I realize this is, is a question I probably should have asked in the other part. Um, Sharif, are all these items that are in the timeline, are they in the budget that was presented last meeting?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, all right. And I guess a question, um, a thought for the council, um, is, you know, I, I fully acknowledging that we've voted on, on all of this, but when we look at, um, our budget situation and some of these more expensive ticket items coming up in 2024, I do wonder if, um, you know, there's any appetite to, you know, considering them um, amongst the other priorities that we're going to have to be considering, um, as we work through the budget situation. And so that's just a comment. I'm not looking for answers, but it's something I'm, you know, that is of concern to me. Um, I think we had per year document from 2024, or I'm sorry, from April tenth. Um, there was ninety thousand dollars worth of work for 2024 and a hundred and five thousand dollars worth of work in 2025. Um, so that's just a comment. The other comment is just a reminder, we also have all of the ADU work that we've committed to, um, within, um, the, um, the programs of our housing element. And those deadlines are, you know, the month of June through October. And I, one thing that does concern me is when we're looking at all of our work here on the housing element, we look at it. We don't look at all collectively. We kind of have the post-approval plan and then we have the programs. And I guess I just have to assume that the planning department is looking at them all together and prioritizing. But I just want to flag that there's a lot of work within program seven-one through seven-seven related to ADUs. Um, and so I'm just, just flagging that. The other thing that was on the progress report, um, you know, is, is the, um, and I know we have it here, that the, the policy for the, um, the fund has been created, but we still don't have a way for somebody to apply for it. So I guess I'm just trying to flag about, we need to also pri, you know, in my opinion, prioritize the things that we've already committed to, to HCD, um, and not let that get lost.
Sure, I, I would tell that makes sense, um, in the sense, I mean, the, the numbers we got from John on the budget were not to exceed kind of numbers. So I think John thought they may be less, but he just wasn't sure. And we weren't going to press him for a lot of detail. The other thing I want us to be careful of is we sort of created this as, I'll use this word loosely, a contract with the community when we passed the housing element originally, because we kind of passed it in a hurry way back, it's hard to remember that back that far in history in January, where we sort of rushed it through and said, okay, there's a bunch of stuff that we acknowledge isn't done, but we're going to pass the housing element anyway. Um, and the post-housing, um, adoption plan, I think was significant for getting this through the planning commission, for instance, um, and getting it through the council. So I, I hear what you're saying. We have commitments to HCD. I also think we have, you know, commitments to the community as well. So we're going to have to figure out how to balance those.
Right, I just, I just don't want those things to get lost when we talk about these other things. Because these things are this month and the next, and you know, June, July, August. Um, and I will say, I don't feel like we rushed the housing element. Um, I feel like we took a lot longer than we could have on that, so, um, but that's fine. All right, so that's, that's it for, for, for my comments on this. Um, so if this is just a review and discuss and there's no other discussion, um, I guess we can move on. I, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm trying to see you, uh, Mary and Jeff, I'm assuming you have no additional.
I, I, uh, just wanted a clarification on what you said, Sarah. You were talking about the fund, whether we need, do we need to do an addendum on our, on our, um, on our affordable housing fund?
I was just, I was flagging the things that are in our, um, housing element annual progress report and the deadlines within it. We reviewed it at the April tenth meeting. In that document, there, there are thing, there are things that still need to be done. Um, one of which is all of the programs around ADUs. Another, it mentions that we have, um, uh, the fund is created and implemented. And to my knowledge, there's, I don't know, I guess it depends on what the word implemented means, but I don't think we still have a way for somebody to apply for the funds. So I was just broadly trying to flag the other things within this domain, um, that are, um, already within the housing element before the, you know, as, as part of the overall work on the housing element and the post-approval.
So the sunrise provision is mentioned in the housing element. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there are several commitments to HCD and, and the state that we are needing to evaluate how to get it done. Um, right now, the idea would be, you know, September timeframe is when the ad hoc committee would get started and a lot of more of the work would be done, which if we can get, use some of that time for the ADU, um, between here and September, that, that seems to dovetail. But I think a lot of it is going to depend on the planning department and what they think, uh, they need to do and the level of commitment they need to make in order to support all this. So we need that input. And I, I think.
We don't need to move on this.
No, I, I don't think we can decide in the abstract. I think it starts boiling down to a very, very practical set of, okay, here's the activities. Can we parallel process? Can we not? And then go from there. And then, um, there's nothing to stop people applying for use of the housing fund, but it is not clear how they do that. And so my question is, is that something that we should be doing? Um, who is responsible for that? That was not something.
No, that was my question. Thank you very much.
Like, what do we, like, are you proposing that we should have, um, a different subcommittee? Or, or the town attorney start looking at, um, ways of having a process outlined? Um, we also discussed having a, uh, concierge type contact as part of a use of our affordable housing funds. Um, you could have a person guide people through, you could have checklist, you know.
We're just getting a little far from the agenda.
I know, but we're trying to figure this out in public so we can have some to-do items afterwards. So, um, anyway, those are honest questions that we ought, we should be dealing with in the near future, um, up to the group, how we want to think about ordering.
Though, I, I would assume that those are, you know, a lot of what you just mentioned, as with the, it's staff work, right? Um, making an application possible, I don't think that's, that's council work. Um, the ADU programs, one, seven-one through seven-seven is staff work. So all I was trying to do is flag the bigger picture, um, and around the housing element, um, and the amount of work and cost, uh, collectively. I just didn't want those other things to get lost. So that, that was the main purpose for my comments. Since those, those deadlines are right now. So, um, all right, I think we, I think we can move on. We don't have to, uh, we've done our review and discuss, um, and, um, I'm happy to move on to, uh, committee reports at this point.
So we had a request to do public comment. Um, it seems like now would be a good time.
On the committee reports?
For the committee report, right? Just do it up, upfront.
Sure, happy to take public comment on the committee reports. I think it's.
I thought they won't have anyone doing it after.
Are there any public comments on the committee reports?
I, I think the point is, like, for example, if anyone has an oral subcommittee rapport, I just have one. We can do that, you have two, so we could do that. And then take the public comments. Um, so mine is pretty simple. It was on Sunday, it was the sixtieth anniversary of the town's vote to incorporate. And, um, Nancy Lund, Pandy Dews, and the Historical Resources Committee, uh, put together a very nice tea for residents who have been in town for sixty years. And it was well-attended. Um, people had great stories and, uh, a lot of people were catching up after, uh, not seeing each other for a while and it was held at the town center. So that was the first, uh, sixtieth anniversary event. And stay tuned for more, uh, upcoming with the town picnic in the fall, I think, right? So that's that one.
I went on June twenty-first, uh, to the two thousand and twenty-four General Assembly of the American, of the Association of Bay Area Governments and Metropolitan Transport Commission at the Open Museum. And it was very, very interesting for lots of reasons, including the budget presentations, because ABAG's budget is in pretty bad shape. So it was interesting to see that you can do budget presentations, no matter how bad. Um, the, uh, the, it was very, uh, uh, there was a lot of talk about funding, uh, particularly around the double A measures and, uh, our resources in particular, uh, for one shoreline and a watershed, uh, management and our public lands management and opportunities for funding. So, uh, which brings me into my second, uh, committee, which is conservation. Um, I, and I did, I, I will give a, uh, send in my written report on that when, within, for the next minute so that, so that you can see in the public record where you apply for these grants and funds. I, I think they, they're, they're clearly trying hard to get this money out. And we qualify. This is, this is our strength. We are a great resource for, uh, environmental resources. So, um, conservation, uh, was working hard on trying to figure out what, what its next step was going to be, um, in terms of the land management of Springdown and Frog Pond. And they're, they're pretty close to getting on that. And I was hoping, um, they, there's some, that, I don't have anything formal to bring, uh, or they don't have anything formal to bring, but they're going to look at these funding sources and see if we can get some funds, uh, for, uh, wetland restoration, et cetera, that, uh, would help them with their maintenance issues around our, our watershed. They may need to come to us for support on that, and I just wanted to give you a heads up. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mary. Any, any other oral updates? If not, I have, um, the, uh, uh, last week was the final meeting of the Hawthorns' POG. Um, it was a really, really well-run meeting. We had good, um, public participation and a very thorough voting process. Um, the meeting's recorded for anybody who would like, um, to watch it. Um, the, the, uh, direction at the end, which is, as a reminder, the POG is, is, is an advisory committee, um, to the next step within the mid-pen process. Uh, the, the, uh, approach that stood out was, uh, the approach which was late to the process, which was, um, parking area number ten, which has an entry right at where Portola and Alpine Road intersect. And so not using either of the existing, um, entrances into the Hawthorns, but creating a new, um, entry at that location and a, uh, a parking lot that is less visible to the street because the way the land works there, there's a berm and, um, they could, um, put the parking in that location, which also had, um, less movement of soil. Um, and so that is the one, um, that popped out at the top after all the votes were tabulated. Um, the second one, which all, all of the data will go to the next, um, group so they can see, um, all the pros and cons and iterations of the tallies. Um, the, the, the second runner-up was the entrance, um, immediately across from Roberts, using that entrance and then a parking, uh, lot, pretty much immediately to the right as you come in from that spot. And so that data and content, um, and discussion will now go to the Hawthorns', uh, Natural Resources, uh, Committee. And that committee then makes a recommendation to the board at the Hawthorns. From there, the, the Hawthorns will come back to the town of Portola, will, will come for the first time to the town of Portola Valley for a study session only and discussion, um, to hear feedback from the council. From that point, it will then go back to the mid-pen board and only at that pen point will the mid-pen board make their final vote, um, on the direction. Um, once they make their vote, that will then begin the formal process with the town. So happy to answer any questions on that, but that's, that was the outcome of that meeting. All right, hearing no questions, um, I am happy to, uh, go to public comment on the committee and subcommittee reports, both oral and written. Are there any hands in the schoolhouse? I don't, I don't think I see anybody in there.
Yes, there's one.
Okay.
I think the Hawthorns is very important. It brings in fifty parking places to a very central area of Portola Valley. So when we're writing, when we're verbally doing our summary, we're not telling the public all the information we can tell them. So everything is written up in the POG, pros and cons of parking lot number nine and parking lot number ten. But there's also parking lot one through eight. And I personally still think that the parking should go up and over the hill and, and to the area where we will not see it on Alpine Road. And I'm going to stick with that, but the public doesn't know if you don't type up your summary reports. Uh, and, and include the paperwork from the POG meeting that you went to. So it's very, very detailed, but it needs to be attached to the town council agenda for the public to learn about what's coming to our town. It's, it, it can't happen behind closed doors. We have to educate more. So please, please write it up and attach everything from the meetings or we're going to have a lot of surprised, um, people. And then I do have, or residents of the town. And I am wondering why, why it comes back to a study session and a discussion and why the, um, Planning Commission would not see anything from the Hawthorns. Can somebody explain that to me? Because I think the Planning Commission is land planning in our town. And I don't think the Planning Commission should ever be skipped on large properties of seventy-nine acres, uh, without their involvement. So it can't just be a discussion group and it goes back and then it comes back to the plant. I mean, wouldn't you want, I've seen Carter War with the Priory come to the Planning Commission, come to ASCC. Hey, what do you think of this? Hey, what do you think of this? Get information, go back. But they're the educated ones that's seen a lot come through. And I would like to the Planning Commission to be a part of the. Study session and discussion before it goes back for a vote for MROSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I was very happy to see and hear about. Looking to put in for grants and I and I hope that, you know, the finance. Department can get the paperwork to support whatever grants that we we put in for. Since we are, we don't have the money to spend for these much needed items. At one of the bicycle traffic committees, they were saying that they don't have to support. Safe routes to school. So it's just interesting to hear that there may be a couple of exits or entrances. Along Portola Road or Alpine Road and Portola Road at that intersection. Because so many of the kids going to Corder Madera actually use that route and they're, you know, the kids are alone. So hopefully somebody's looking into that and either speed bumps or hire people with. Crosswalk, you know, right now we have a bunch of flags in town and signs. But perhaps we'd have to do something extra because most people, like when they're either. Going to some place spectacular in Portola Valley, you know, in Windy Hill or coming out of there. Going about their day, they're they're just leaving. And we we need to keep our kids safe as we're encouraging them to walk and bike to school. So hopefully that's taken into consideration since, you know, it was said at that other meeting. That the town, I think it was based on the town attorney that they. Did not have to support safe routes to school. We can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Any other hands on Zoom? I do not see any other hands raised on Zoom. So I am, and I'm assuming none in the schoolhouse, guys?
None.
So I am going to close oral communications on this item and bring it back for for council council discussion. Any discussion on any of the oral or written? Committee and subcommittee reports.
I don't have anything.
Sorry?
I do not.
So I do think it is confusing about the relationship of the POG procedure. And the town governance involvement in that. I don't know if it's today or in the future where we could make more information available about our role. In that process. It's a huge process. And at one point, I think, Sarah, if I recall correctly, it wasn't even going to come to the town necessarily for discussion. I don't know if you have comments now or maybe in the.
Yeah, no, let's talk about it now. Definitely. Yeah. So I I appreciate that it's confusing. I I've been giving the same update and maybe it's easier when you, if if people were to refer back to the table that I once shared. And I can reattach it. The table hasn't changed. Basically. Per. Feedback from the community and frankly from myself. I they originally were just going to wait and go through their entire process. And have a go up for their board approval before it came to the town. I thought it would be more effective and I think they heard community feedback as well. For them to. Prior to that, have a touch point with the town to have a study session. And so the study session would be. You know, our town attorney and Sharif, you guys will have to figure out what the format of this is, but it was really supposed to be a dialogue. For them to hear informal feedback on where they are in their process from the council. From that point. It would then go back. You know, then they would go back and review that feedback as a board and make their decision. And only then does it actually even begin the town process. So comments about it not going to the planning or the. That it'll it'll go through all the proper channels once that their vote is done. They can't come to the town. For formal action until their board has taken their form formal action. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that helps the refresher for me. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's in that table, but I'm more than happy to to reshare that table.
Maybe just share a link to the POG proceedings so people can, if they want to go read their stuff.
Yeah, yeah. I can do that. It's been on PV Forum a lot too, and we have had really good public participation.
So I just. So that means that it will come to the Planning Commission first before it comes to the to the council?
Once the formal.
Once it's done.
Yeah, the formal process will start any other normal, formal. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And that's always been the plan. I have I have a, thank you very much for the subcommittee report, Mary and Judith. That was really helpful. So thank you for taking the time to pull that together. My question is also related to the previous discussion we had. Since, how how are you guys envisioning? The outreach subcommittee dovetailing, because I'm assuming that committee's work will then be. Given to the ad hoc committee. And I know there's rightly so sensitivity about privacy. Is it at that point, I guess what I'm I'm kind of trying to understand is in terms of the timeline of that subcommittee. How do you see that sub, does the subcommittee kind of wrap up with your August report? And. At that point. If the ad hoc committee is getting started in September, is that when you expect things? To become public or have you thought through that timeline?
This is for the subcommittee. The report that we made. So we need to see where we are during the summer is the short answer. We will need to make sure that people who still want to be in the process as parcel owners are comfortable. Moving forward and we have to get them comfortable with some kind of public disclosure and a process for that. We're not there yet. We're still figuring out and sifting through where people are in their own thought process. So we'll. Let you know, we're planning to wrap up end of August, beginning of September. So it's a handoff. And you know, obviously, we have to enable the ad hoc committee to move forward. So. We take the point that we have to think through how that handoff is going to work, but we we have some more work to do to. To figure out what makes sense. And some people will drop out and not be interested in proceeding. So. It'll be a whittle down. Set and then some resource materials that we put together as a package is what I'm envisioning. Of what the work that's been gone before, so that the ad hoc committee can can have a more fulsome. Understanding of what's been evaluated over the course of. Past efforts, both in the subcommittee and, you know, the town-owned efforts, town-owned property chart as well. We we're just starting to collate the resources and then the repository efforts would also. Need to feed into that so that the ad hoc committee can start where we're leaving off. I don't know if that helps, but that's how we're thinking about it right now.
Yeah, no, it does. It's definitely helpful. So like on page 39 of the agenda packet where you. Added the previous, you know, documentation of each step. In terms of the evaluation item number three, for instance, is. That the subcommittee would be maintaining a list of activities conducted and feedback received per site. And then it goes on on page 40 to describe the work of the ad hoc committee. And all of it is very detailed around, I I won't read it out loud, but it's the, you know, third paragraph on that page. I guess what would be helpful for me is when you guys come back in August, if you need to make refinements to what. Those I don't, you know, to that. Given where things stand, I think that would be helpful for me. And then. The other thing that I would be interested to know in your final report, assuming that you may not be quite ready to share. Property. Addresses and and specifics would be to know on your table. Thank you very much for the table. On page. Fifty-three. What I was curious about and looking at that is. How many of them? What is the number of units that are very low income? So if there's a way, when you think about that table, to disclose that. Because I think that's a really important aspect of this. If that's through an additional column or whoever you guys want to think about it, but for your final report, assuming you're not going to be. Sharing personalized, you know, property information to at least know that would be helpful. Does that make sense?
Well, you know.
So for instance, if.
Are you looking for best guess?
Well, no, if the goal of the sunrise, which we all know is to replace Ford, which is 50 very low income. I'm curious to know with this table. Which of these parcels? Are interested in doing that?
Yeah, well, I think that 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 would be a very good next column. And we can give it a try, but I'm afraid it would be raw. It would be raw.
It would be wrong?
Raw. It would be raw. It wouldn't be, you know, six. It would have to be a range or it'd have to be. A suggestion that they were interested.
Either way, I don't want to be prescriptive on the how, but just to get understanding of. If if there, if, which would be amazing if we were getting enough interest to, you know. Across these rows. For the 50 very low income.
Yeah.
That was my only comment.
Well, I believe we're we're encouraged that this is possible.
Great. That was my only comment on that. Any other final comments? Otherwise, I think we are nearing to a close. Sorry, guys, it's. So, okay, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.